Nardini?
Here.
Castillo, here. Burby?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Beremas?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Schenck?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Tulluto?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Nudera?
Here.
Virgil absent, thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. Clerk Tambers, anyone signed up to make public comment at this committee of the whole meeting?
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who did not have the opportunity to sign up for a public comment who would like to do so? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move into the business before the committee. Review of the fiscal year 2026 budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're going to continue to go through the budget details today, but I want to point out before we get started, under 3A, review of the fiscal year 2026 budget, we included the 2026 budget circle back memo as of October 20th. So, a number of you had circle back items. We put the information on there. Mayor will determine later, I think, how and when we address those, if we do it before the last evening, but we just wanted to point that out. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce the esteemed President of the Heritage Foundation, Jean Baker.
Thank you so much, City Manager Grabowski. And thank you so much for the invitation to join you tonight as part of the annual budget process. I am Jean Baker and serve on the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation as President, newly elected this month. So, it's a new position for me. There are several members of the foundation here with us and to support us, and I'd like them to stand and be recognized for their work to support the foundation, as well as the city of Elmhurst.
And we'll have a little round of applause.
In many of my jobs, I've been the number one cheerleader, and that apparently doesn't leave when you retire. So, that's a personality trait that I have acquired. As you know, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation is a not-for-profit fundraising arm of the Elmhurst History Museum and the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse. The foundation supports the museum and schoolhouse in many ways. They include advocating and educating the community, helping market, the outstanding programs and award-winning exhibits the museum offers, as well as fundraising and friend-raising. This enables us to provide an annual grant to the museum that provides monies to underwrite exhibits and educational activities. This funding also helps augment and extend the impact of the city's approved budget. We are always, we are aware that the current economic climate poses challenges. I'm sorry, but I also have allergies that are making me nuts right now, but, and tears in my eyes which are clouding my words of wisdom. But we are optimistic about the continued impact that the museum's exhibits and programs will have. Our membership now stands well over 300 members strong, and we plan to continue the outreach efforts so that membership continues to grow, as does private sector investments through sponsorships, fundraisers, and charitable donations to the foundation. The History Museum has continued to be a popular, as well as a growing department of the city. The museum staff is top drawer, works well together, and are a creative and innovative life force. The museum team is a lean, mean, and creative machine that the foundation wants to support, so they continue to create and provide all of the exhibits and program, programming that will draw people to the museum and Elmhurst. This interest in and for the museum helps fuel the uptown economy for restaurants, bars, shops, and entertainment. The opening night receptions are well attended and are often standing-room-only events these days. As a side note, I would like to add that our small bite offerings during the receptions always somehow tie into the new exhibit by theme or time period, which, for many guests, bring back memories, as well as talking points for the evening. The night we served Twinkies, Ding Dongs, Hostess cupcakes for dessert was filled with much laughter and conversations that started with "I remember when..." dot, dot, dot. This past year, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation grant funded 100% of the costs associated with three exhibits, as well as all of the museum's educational programs and events for 2024. The foundation continues to underwrite the bus transportation costs for all Elmhurst District 205 school field trips to the museum and to the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse. Elmhurst Heritage Foundation also provided funds so that the museum could acquire the CCC uniform to be used in the future for an exhibit. One of our recent accomplishments was the creation of the Dr. Virginia R. Stewart Memorial Fund, named in honor of our first executive director of the Elmhurst History Museum. Her husband Al made a generous donation to the foundation to create this new fund, which we worked to grow by inviting additional donations. This past year, the fund was able to help support the initial concert series, which occurred on the Fourth Friday of each month at the museum's new public performance space. The space has had a very good opening year, and the foundation continues to look forward to interesting and entertaining exhibits, programs, and concerts. In 2021, the museum applied for and received an Illinois Public Museum capital grant to build the public performance space. The performance was completed this year. Between 2021 and 2025, the cost for the project unfortunately increased. Dave Olberg and city staff looked closely at our, the city's expenditures' public works' budget to see if any work could be rearranged to reduce the gap in the funding deficit and the actual cost of the performance space. After all the pencil sharpening and still having a shortfall, Elmhurst Heritage Foundation ran a capital campaign to raise the funds needed to close the gap in funding so the performance space could be built. Huzzah to all involved. Thanks to all donors for their time and talents, as well as check writing. Elmhurst Heritage Foundation hosted the very successful 10th Annual Elmhurst Craft Beer Fest, and we anticipate hosting the 11th Annual next year. Please save the date of September 19th, 2026. At our wrap-up meeting, we all seem to agree that the success of the fest is due to the cooperation and support of all of our partners that range from brewer, brewers, you say that quickly, restaurants, bars, and all parts of the city, Elmhurst History Museum staff, Elmhurst Heritage Foundation members, to have a safe and productive day. Huge shout-outs go to Kristy Blessing from Pints, who always helps connecting us to the brewers, it's a hard word to say, and Kathy Jordan, who has been our fearless leader and guide for these past 10 years. It is fun to see our cities officials volunteering in a variety of ways that range from site setup, security, and to being a celebrity porter, a very coveted role. Our responses let us know that after the fest was finished, 50% of the attendees stayed in Elmhurst to enjoy what uptown offers in dining and entertainment. The police department has kept us safe and has always offered a supportive presence. Elmhurst Heritage Foundation is proud that when fundraising, we keep our costs to the minimum so that we are able to maximize the impact of the event on future exhibits, programs, and events at the museum. Elmhurst Heritage Foundation has continued to volunteer and recruit players for the Town vs. Gown Vintage Baseball Game. The Town won this year, in case you missed the score. I still haven't learned how to trash talk, even though my brother has attempted to teach me. I'm guessing trash talking is just not in my nature. Huzzah. Looking ahead, the foundation is once again committed to funding 100% of the costs of the museum's exhibits and programs. This will include a series of concerts and performances at the museum's new public performance space. We are looking forward to completing a strategic plan to help us utilize our resources and talents wisely while accomplishing our many goals. Less you don't think I have any skin in the game, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that my mother, Jean L. Baker, is included in the biography wall on the second floor of the museum in the By All Accounts exhibit. During her life in Elmhurst, she was involved in many community groups and was co-chair of the Underpass Committee. We have her and Ed Vertavec and many other Elmhurst residents to thank for the Underpass. My mother was also included in the First Ladies of Elmhurst book. See what our museum has put together in the past, in the very recent past, Elmhurst, Now and Then, absolutely amazing pictures, and currently, World of Tomorrow, which is, reflects the current exhibit at the museum now. And when I walked in on Saturday, which was the first time I saw, I was blown away with the color, the vibrancy, the design, the creation. Absolutely wonderful exhibit. In closing, I'd like to thank you, the city of Elmhurst, for the support for the museum over many years. As an Elmhurst resident for all but three months of my life, I'm a smidge over 21. Oh, yeah, a very big smidge. It continues to be a pleasure to be from and live in this great community. We are so fortunate for the schools, the parks, library, churches, service organizations, shops, restaurants, and cultural institutions, and most of all, the people that add so much to the fiber and fabric of our community. I am so grateful in so many ways, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And you know trash talking is not allowed at the old-time baseball game. It's, is that correct, referee?
That is correct, sir.
All right. So, you don't need to learn it.
Well, the trash talking has to be per period, and I can't do that. And I pass it on to Dave, our fearless leader of the Elmhurst History Museum.
All right, Director Olberg.
All right, thanks, Jean. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So, you have before you our proposed budget for 2026. I'm just gonna just hit a couple of high points very quickly and then open things up for questions, if you've got any. This budget is predicated on the same staffing that we have had for, actually, as long as I've been here. I will be celebrating eight years in about three weeks, believe it or not, and our head count remains exactly the same. We have four full-time staff, myself, our curator of collections, curator of exhibits, and curator of education and public programs, and four part-time roles at 18 hours a week or less, and that is our administrative assistant, our marketing and communications specialist, our museum coordinator, and our education and public programs assistant, which comes to an equivalent of 5.75 FTEs, or full-time equivalents. Just looking at a couple of major accomplishments in this past year, the biggest one, obviously, is the ribbon cutting and opening of the new public performance space on the museum campus. We just successfully concluded our first concert series this year. I'm seeing a lot of new faces. It's rare we're not seeing 250 to 300 people every time we put somebody up on that stage, more, especially Beer Fest, where we had more than 1,000 again. And it's bringing in a whole new audience, and it's doing a lot of new things for us. Three major exhibits this past year, Snapshots, Elmhurst Now and Then, Acre by Acre, our farming heritage, and World of Tomorrow. And I'm saying a lot when I say that this is Sarah's best exhibit to date. If you saw Lost Chicagoland Department Stores, this is a whole head and shoulders above that one, believe it or not. And it's been getting us a lot of great press, including major coverage in The Tribune and on WGN as well. I should also call out that the museum team received an award of superior achievement this past year for the exhibition Lost Chicagoland Department Stores. The Illinois Association of Museums only awards one of those in any category for the more than 1,000 museums in the state of Illinois, so that's a major accomplishment, and that's happened twice in the past three years. We got one for Dan's documentary on the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse back in 2022 as well. Jean pointed out our new book, Snapshots, Elmhurst Now and Then. That's already in its third printing. It's doing pretty well for us, I have to say. People really like it. If you haven't seen it, come see us afterwards. I know a guy who can fix you up with one, I think. And lots of great things coming up. Looking ahead, three major exhibits planned for next year. We're gonna open the year with Anatomy of Healthcare, DuPage County Medical History, which is gonna run January through early May. We're gonna celebrate the Centennial of the Endeavor Health Elmhurst Hospital with that one, as well as talk about Lindlar Sanitarium and a lot of other healthcare topics in our community. We're gonna pivot to a summer exhibit on loan from the Smithsonian Institution. It's called It's Complicated: A Story of Girlhood. It was originally created for the Centennial of Women Suffrage, and it tells the stories of girls and young women who have made vast changes in the country's history, and allows cutouts for us to talk about Elmhurst and Chicagoland residents who made major changes as well. I'm very excited to have that. And we're gonna close the year with Bear Down: Football in the Windy City, examining the history of the Chicago Bears, Chicago Cardinals, and of course, our semi-pro team, the Elmhurst Travelers, as well. We're gonna be leaning into America's 250th. That's a semi-quintcentennial. I had to look it up, and I'm an historian, but we're gonna have a lot of fun with that. We're doing some really cool programming next year. We have a huge patriotic concert by the Illinois Brass Band the weekend before the Fourth of July. I'm gonna kick things off in January with a very special lecture, looking back on 250 years of human history in the area we call Elmhurst today. I will debut that at the museum, and then I will take that to every cultural and civic organization that will have me, I promise you. We also have Leslie Goddard coming as Abigail Adams as well, and a lot of other great stuff coming up. We're going to lean into our successful concert series with an expanded Fourth Friday concert series running May through September with diverse musical genres, and I'm looking to even land on the opening of the Bears exhibit weekend and have a major Chicago Blues artist on the stage. We're in negotiations right now on that, but we're gonna have Bears, Blues, and barbecue for kickoff in August. I think it's gonna be quite a bit of fun. And then, of course, quarry tours coming back. We've got the Town vs. Gown game, Museum Maker Mondays, our summer camp, so, so, so much more. So, as you look at the exhibit before you, I will just call out the two line items that warranted a J form, basically, because they are up over where they normally are. The first one is account code 1108080-531190, building maintenance, explanation for that. Usually, we allocate about $17,000 for that. We have to do two repair and maintenance items in the next year. The first is replacing a leaking roof over the curator of collections office at the south end of the Gloss Mansion, what had once been a porch, an open porch, I should say, on the Gloss Mansion. We don't like water coming into the curator of collections office. The wood is rotted, and we're gonna have to do some work. And the other is to replace the carpeting in the first-floor gallery, where the existing carpeting dates back to the early 1990s. They no longer even manufacture the replacement squares for that carpeting anymore, and I'm afraid we used them up about a year and a half ago. So, we reached the point where we're gonna have to do that. And then, the other line item is educational programming, actually, and that line item is 1108080-532105, educational programs. That is up over last year, and that increase is largely because we're leaning into some semi-quintcentennial programming, and we want to have a major marquee program, both to anchor our summer exhibit and to anchor the opening of our football exhibit as well. I'm pleased to say that, once again, the foundation grant is going to underwrite 100% of the costs for all educational programs and all of our exhibitions. As a matter of fact, the foundation grant is looking to be $122,200 this year, is going to cover the costs of our annual exhibit programs, our public programming, as well as, new this year, actually, leaning into the mailers, the direct mail pieces that go to every resident in Elmhurst. We're gonna have three of those, one for each exhibit, and I'm pleased to say the foundation has stepped up and is going to help us with that as well. And then, some additional, just landscaping to make the public performance space look better, and some support, as they have in the past, for artifact acquisition and artifact conservation and restoration. And by the way, Jean mentioned, we, the foundation helped us acquire a Civilian Conservation Corps uniform that was worn by Leland Powers, who was the commanding officer of our CCC camp. It was Roosevelt's Tree Army, that was the nickname for it back during the Great Depression. We had a camp right here in Elmhurst, Camp Elmhurst. That is on display. We just put in the history spotlight today, so come by and see what it's all about. It's really an interesting part of our history. So, I think that's all I have, unless there are questions or comments.
Let me just make a couple comments to help the council here. So, if you didn't notice, we had a lot of reading this week, but there was the circle back memo, and in the back of the circle back memo is a list, Exhibit A, of cuts to the budget that have already, that are incorporated in the budget. So, when you look at each department, as you recall, last time, we asked the department head to highlight those, so they're right here. And there are two cuts for the museum, and they are, I think it's noteworthy that, there's one for about $8,000, one for $3,000. It's noteworthy, it says that the foundation is funding those shortfalls. And if you were around here in 2010 or '11, there was a certain alderman who questioned the budget of the museum, which is a department of our city. And the foundation, since that time, has consistently stepped up to help fund the museum's operations, and I want to thank the foundation for that. And this is one year where we're looking for some help next year, and they've stepped up to do that. Hardworking individuals who contribute to our community, so I want to acknowledge that. I open it up for questions. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dave Olberg, thank you for that summary. You're never at a loss for words, and I appreciate that, and you do it in a very, very quick fashion. I don't think I can speak that fast if I tried, so thank you. I also want to just make a comment. It's funny that you mentioned about a Bear Down exhibit, about the Chicago Bears upcoming. At least, we're having a winning season so far, so that's great timing to make a mention of such an exhibit, so it'll probably double the attendance if we do well this year. We, as if I'm on the team. I also want to concur with Mayor Levin in regards to the foundation's efforts for the past number of years. Excellent job covering more and more costs, it seems like, every year, so thank you for everybody who participates in the foundation. But now, let's get back to some of my questions. So, I do appreciate the cuts that have already been made to all of the budgets in all of the departments, but as we sit here and continue, or the finance committee will be continuing conversations about revenue increases, et cetera, and what we can do. I'm kinda taking a little bit of a closer look at every single department to question and see what else, if anything, we can trim down. With that said, Dave, you already spoke with on page 267, 1190, building maintenance. No other questions. You already summarized how old it is. I just want to make it a circle back, so I get to pay a visit and check it out and see where it's at and if it's absolutely needed versus what I always like to say, a "nice to have." So, if I could just make that line item as a circle back, I'd appreciate it. One of the other things that I noticed, which was interesting, was IT services was cut in half. Was that reallocated somewhere? Because that's a significant drop from 100 and something thousand to 73,000.
Yes, so this year, we took a look at the IT allocation and reallocated it by updating the number of computers that each department has. That's how the allocation was done, and so that resulted in a reduction in the amount charged to the museum.
Okay, it wasn't a change in the number of computers, it was just the way we were doing the allocation.
The way we allocated it, correct. So, looking at all departments and dividing that expense appropriately.
Thank you. Line item 532135, rentals. Remind me, is this rentals as in rental space, or rental exhibits, or both?
This, no, this is the cost for the collection storage facility that we have for the artifacts for the museum. Anytime you come visit us and see one of our exhibits, you're looking at 1% of the totality of our historic collections, and so, we do have a space at Carroll Lane that is leased. It's high-density storage with movable shelving, so that we can pack every square inch of that with what we have. And for anybody who's interested in taking a look at that, I'd be happy to take you over there, too. It's, as a matter of fact, I want to say that Elmhurst TV just did a video with us. I'm not sure when it's gonna drop, kinda showing off a little bit of it, but it's, you know that scene at the end of Raiders of the Lost Ark where, you know, the crate goes? It's not quite that big, but it is packed that densely, honestly.
With that, I know years ago, this was brought up as well in regards to needing space for some of the items. Have we, it was my understanding back then, and still to this day, correct me if I'm wrong, that essentially, at one time, not saying it's happening now, but at one time, a resident would bring in, I don't know, an old pair of shoes, right, and they considered it historic, and the museum would accept them and store them away. I'm using an absurd example, obviously, but have we tried to eliminate some of the items in the storage?
We actually, yeah, we've gone through, the museum terminology for this is deaccession. We've gone through two major deaccession processes through our curator of collections, Dan London, myself, and actually, our former museum coordinator, Jane Goodson, who was getting her master's degree at the time. And we purged a lot of stuff that we found nonessential to our mission. It really didn't tell an Elmhurst story, it was simply old. So, what we're storing is genuinely things that are telling a local story in some way, shape, or form, and these were, these both came before this city council, because the city council is ultimately the owner of these things for, finally, it comes before public affairs and safety to answer questions and for discussion, and then comes before this group. And we do, did two major purges of that collection to get extraneous material out of there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I know I've asked before, or somebody asked it before, and there was an answer before in previous years. The consultant fees, could you tell me what that's related to?
The consultant fees, yes. The consultant fees are for Ken Bartel's consulting. He provides counsel to both me as executive director and helps me in my role as, frankly, in addition to executive director, also development officer for the organization. So, a lot of the sponsorships, fundraising, helping with the capital campaign that finished off our public performance space, for example. And there is a cost share, and that's part of the foundation grant as well, because he also provides advice to, especially, our development and membership committee, again, with the fundraising piece. So, that's what the consultant fees are.
I appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the work that you do, of course, in detail, and I only ask these questions because, you know, I'm trying to find ways to avoid property tax increase. So, maybe that could be a circle back item to see if we could look at if that amount could be adjusted for next year.
Anyone else? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. So, as always, very impressive. I love the partnership amongst everybody to make this happen. I think it's terrific. Could you help me in refresh my memory? You're talking about some, you know, roof work on the museum. Didn't we just, I thought we just did, what, maybe I'm thinking of a chimney?
It's a chimney rebuild that you're thinking of, yeah. We had three chimneys on the south end of the campus that were damaged by the Drico End Event back in 2020, and there was enough spalling, and there was enough analysis that we knew that was a life and safety issue, and we had to do a tear-down and rebuild on those. The roof I'm talking about is a small section of roof. It is over, it's a wooden roof that is over the curator of collections office. of collections office, over what used to be an open porch before it was eventually enclosed to maximize the, the space. But that's a pretty important beating heart of the museum. That's where our collections records are. And, you know, that's where we intake a lot of the, the artifacts, loan artifacts, and donations to the museum as well. So that's, that's the roofing question.
So, so other than the, the things that are mentioned, the carpet, the roof, et cetera, is there anything in the near future that you anticipate? I know it's an older building and surprises happen, but...
We, I mean, we're doing, I'm working with Larry Percevich in, in building and operations to do a long-range analysis on what we think are maintenance needs that may need to happen. I don't want to speak out of turn until we have all of that information in. We're going to do an analysis over the winter and into the spring and have a better handle on what we're doing. But our youngest building is the Education Center. It's 75 years old. The Gloss Mansion is 132. And the oldest building is the Churchville One Room Schoolhouse, which just celebrated 175 years this year and is probably in the best shape of all three. They don't build them like they used to.
Thank you very much.
Alderman, Bram?
Yes, thank you. Just a follow-up, not a follow-up, just a question on the Education Center, since you brought that up, Dave. What is, what is the space allocation like in the Education Center? Are we using it for 100% programming? Where is that at? I thought it was called the Learning Center for some reason. That's what I wrote as a note. But the Education Center, the building next door to the Gloss Mansion, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. So the building you're talking about was acquired through a project first-rate grant in 1999. It was formerly a medical arts and an office building at different points in its history. We basically use, I would say, the southern portion of it. We took out some non-load-bearing walls. And basically, that's, we have a large programming front room and an even larger programming back room in that space. That's where we do most of our lectures. That's where we do smaller concerts and dramatic events inside. That's where we do our receptions. There's a small storage closet in between. And then the, the northern half of the building contains support offices. Basically, my office is there. Our administrative professionals' office is there. We have a small breakout meeting room and storage room in there. And we have three other offices, one for our marketing and, and communication specialists, one for our curator of education and public programs, and one for our education assistant as well. So there's a partial basement. There's a lot of crawl space under there. I'll give you, if you're going to come by and see my carpets, I'll give you a tour of that one, too. But it is full to the gills. I will tell you that.
Thank you. Alderman, Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. Gene, I want to let you know your mom is proud of you and what you did, you said.
Thank you.
Director Oldberg, following up on Alderman Brennan's point of the, the building maintenance versus the repair, is anyone worried about line number 570100, building improvements where we have two, you know, this year, 2026, 2027, I don't know what you have out past that, but they're, they're zeroed out right now.
Right. We're, we're doing a full analysis. And again, I don't want to populate that with things when we, we don't know what's really going on yet.
You are anticipating some numbers dropping in there, or do you think it's?
Over the next five years, I can't imagine there's not going to be some repair and maintenance, especially when you've got buildings that are 75 years old, 132 years old, and 175.
Right.
Yeah.
So you're, you're working on that and you feel comfortable with what we have right now?
Yeah. Right now, the urgent matters, Dan's roof's got to get fixed. That, that absolutely has to happen. It's leaking. And, and again, that carpeting, I can see floor through parts of it. It's, it's well past its prime.
All right. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable on the team with that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on museum? All right. Well, thank you, Director. Thank you, President, for coming out to join us. Did you have a closing comment, Director Oldberg?
No, just thank you all for your time. And if you haven't seen the new exhibit, come by. Seriously, it is fantastic.
He's got some half-price-off coupons for the council. All right. Thank you both. We'll move on to the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. Is the director of motor fuel tax here? We'll be on page 3-13.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mayor noted, we'll, we'll start off on page, it's actually 3-13 is the cover page for the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. This is one of three public works-related funds that I'll cover this evening. This is a special revenue fund, and it is financed, well, financed by the city's share of state gasoline taxes. And as a result, also, the, there are certain categories of eligible expenses that can, that these dollars can be used for. So they're, they are restricted to the categories that are prescribed by the state that we can use those motor fuel tax dollars on. And there's a couple of things that are, I would call attention to in this Motor Fuel Tax Fund. Page 3-16 is account 570140, which is the capital outlay for roadway improvements. And I'd just like to call attention to that. There's a couple of more significant projects that we have in there this, this coming year. We have some engineering design work that is continuing for the Butterfield and York intersection improvements. And we have also the first phase of the Northwest Elmhurst roadway reconstruction project in that account for 2026. There is one J form that's associated with this fund, and that's on page 3-17. It's in the amount of $240,000. And this, what this really is, is just a reallocation of contract street sweeping services from the general fund into the Motor Fuel Tax Fund for 2026. And it, the, the cost, the outlay for that in general is expected to remain constant with current year expenses. It's just a reallocation of those dollars into the MFT fund from the general fund.
All right. Questions?
What are the federal grants that we're receiving for the street work in '27 and '28?
A portion of that is the Butterfield and York intersection improvements because next year's dollars are slated for engineering design. I don't know if that's the totality of that number, though, just offhand.
Yes, that, yes, that's the totality of the number. It's 300, the 312,000 is in 2026 and 1.2 million in 2027. The state grants that are in those two years are also related to that same project.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman, Erby?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, page 314, the first page on motor fuel, top-line item revenue, coming across, coming obviously out of COVID, and, and now we're coming back into some more, more vehicles, miles traveled, obviously, in the state, and people are buying a little bit more gas. I'm a little bit worried about the peak. So is there a way you could speak to a little bit of the, the push of about a 1.2 million push for next year? And then, then it goes in decline. I agree with the decline due to electric, electric transportation starting to eat into the motor fuel tax. And I think that will be a continual decline until 2050, when it probably hits zero. But I don't have a crystal ball. But can you speak to those 2027, 2028 peaks where we are now?
Are you looking at the motor fuel tax we take in?
Yeah, intergovernmental revenue, top-line item.
I think, are we really more on the next page?
Page 3-14.
So the, the estimates for the motor fuel tax are based off of estimates we get from the Illinois Municipal League. It's a per capita distribution that's done by the state of Illinois. So it's not directly related to motor fuel taxes collected in Elmhurst. It goes to a statewide pool and then gets distributed. So we rely on them for their estimates on the, and then projecting out as just a projected small increase in the motor fuel tax.
I think federal grants next year. I think you should look at page 315.
Okay.
Yes. And then in that intergovernmental line as well, that is the grants to treasure currents statement. So that's both the tax and the grants in that intergovernmental line on 3-14.
So you're saying the 420210 state grants is also being shown as a partial injection into intergovernmental?
Correct. So intergovernmental, yeah, is both of those items.
Alderman, Nardini?
Thank you. Sorry, Director Coyle, I didn't understand that. Could you say the answer you just gave to Alderman, Erby, a second time?
So the, if you're looking on 3-14, intergovernmental revenue is both the motor fuel tax revenue that we get from the state as well as state and federal grants, because they come from an intergovernmental entity. So if you go to 3-15, you can see the detail of what is motor fuel tax versus what is the state and federal grants. So if you combine those two lines, those both make up intergovernmental.
You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go on to Municipal Utility Fund, 4-01.
Okay. So the Municipal Utility Fund is an enterprise fund that's used to account for the water distribution, wastewater treatment activities of the city. All the charges for the services end up in this fund. And in return, all the expenses that the city undertakes to operate and maintain these, these facilities and provide these services are accounted for within the municipal, pardon me, Municipal Utility Fund. And we break this down into three different areas, which I'll start off on page 4-8, which is the water side. So this is essentially all things related to drinking water within the, the MUF. And bear with me, there is quite a long list of, of J forms that are associated with the water side of the operation for 2026. There's about a dozen, to be exact. What I would say, and this is a kind of a common theme that you'll see throughout all of the areas of the MUF going into next year, these items are really, I would say, they generally fall into a category of something that's being driven by a regulation or some compliance with something that the city has to follow. Or they may be related to a commodity or sort of a, a market change in terms of the price of something is already being undertaken in increasing. In general, there's, there's not necessarily a lot of kind of new or different things that are happening. It's just, I'll say, in general, it's probably costing more to do a lot of the same things. But of those, so of those 12, in, in the water section of the MUF, just kind of going through, we have an increase in postage to the tune of about $11,500. There are some new requirements related to the Consumer Confidence Report. This is something, generally, we also refer to it as the Water Quality Report. It's something that we put out currently, once a year, that if you've seen it, it talks about the chemistry of our, our drinking water and a little bit of a bigger picture in terms of where it comes from, other activities that we're undertaking with respect to drinking water.
Director Belek, sorry to interrupt. Can you, what, from what line are you?
It's page 4-10, item A. Postage is account 530160.
Understood.
So there, there is a, a new requirement that is coming into play here in, in 2026, where that report will have to be produced twice per year instead of once per year. There's also some information that we will be needing to get out regarding lead and copper service lines going into 2026. And that kind of rolls into the next item, item B, in account 53165, a cost increase in printing services of $5,000 to account for, again, printing of the Consumer Conference Report and, and also compliance with some of the new lead and copper service rules. Moving on to item C, there's an increase of $23,000 in electricity for next year. This year saw, in June of this year, an increase in the price of electricity of 45%. We are anticipating that that will not be as great going into next year, but nonetheless have, have to account for that going forward, as well as a projected 4% increase in electricity for 2026. The next item, item D, in 530615, is a software maintenance account. And this is really just a shifting of where something is budgeted within the water portion of the MUF. There's, this, this was moved into this account from the five, pardon me, from, 50% of, of this cost was in, in another account that's been moved into here. So this is just a shift of the $22,500 from another account in water to this one. So it's kind of what, what triggered noting it here. But there's no overall increase in cost to the MUF from this item. The next item, item E, asphalt patching, in 531050, would provide funding to repave the entrance to the west reservoir. The pavement there is deteriorating. And it's, it's a location where there is regular traffic in terms of city maintenance vehicles and so on that have to go there to monitor and provide service to that location. So it's, it's time for that to be repaved. The next item in item F, account number 531095, relates to an increase in costs for waste disposal fees. So this is driven by when, when we have a, a crew that's out there excavating a water main break or doing something like replacing a fire hydrant or, or a valve, the, the spoils from that excavation have to get hauled off to an appropriate site. And so we've just been seeing an increase in, in transportation and disposal costs. And this really just accounts for, it's one of those items that I mentioned is kind of doing the same thing. It's, it's just, it's, it's cost of business is, is increasing to be able to do that. Item G, in account 536105, is an increase in $14,000 to this cost center in property and liability insurance. That's something that I think has been noted with a number of accounts across the public works budget going into 2026. Item H, account number 541340, is an anticipated increase of $944,000 in the amount of water purchased from the DuPage Water Commission. So this accounts with a 5% rate increase from 2024 levels, January through April, followed by a 3% increase from 2025 rates for May through December. Item I is a $140,000 increase. It's for depreciations, account number 555000. That's expected increase due to the addition of new capital assets. It includes infrastructure improvements and equipment purchases that, as they're placed into service, their costs get gradually expensed into this account over, over their lifetime. Item J, account number 569999, is a debt service allocation to that account of $238,550. And that is on the IEPA loan associated with the Potable Water Project. That is actually this, the next line item. That is something that's upcoming in next year. That's item K, account number 57270. That is an anticipated approximately $7 million project to update the city's water pumping stations and water reservoirs that would begin next year. And the last item in the water area for 2026 is an increase of $317,000. This is in account 59911. thousand dollars, this is in account five ninety nine eleven, that relates to the creation of the central fleet fund and the allocation for vehicle replacement that's, was discussed at the last council budget workshop. So that is the water portion of the MUF.
All right, let's see, does anyone have a, any questions regarding this portion before we go on, because there are quite a number of J forms, Alderman, Tallulou?
Thank you, I don't remember ever learning this on page four dash three, what accounts for donation, this is in years past, I just, curious, I don't remember that.
So those in the past years, are they developer? Developer added donations, where a developer deeds over, like a water main to the city as part of a development, in the past few years, I think last year was the TIF donating an asset to the, to the MUF, so it's not a cash transaction, it's a transaction for the audited financial statements where we have to record the donation of that capital asset that the TIF is contributing, so I believe in 2024, it was the First Street Sewer Project that the downtown TIF completed, and so that is of value to the MUF as a donation, that's how that's shown.
So it, it's an expense to the TIF?
Correct.
For the development?
Correct.
And then it's recorded as an asset?
Correct.
In the MUF?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, second, may I?
Please.
Second question is on this four dash eleven, the J form, item K, the seven point eight million for the potable water pumping station, is that, was that in all of our planning documents, was that in the cab, is that something new, is that included in the bundles, was that included when we did our water rate study, was that an expected and anticipated project, thank you.
Yes, it was, so it was actually in the original rate study, when we looked at it two years, at a much higher amount, it was an eighteen million dollar project, when we first looked at the rate study two years ago, through some engineering that has been done, the scope of that project has been reduced.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the scope of the project that's been reduced, is that related to the delay of the phosphorus need, or, how does one change a project from eighteen to seven?
I can address that, no, it's, it's, this is specific to the city's drinking water reservoirs and pumping stations, and it, it's not attributable to any of the phosphorus standards or anything like that, that we'll, we'll hear a little bit more about, maybe with some of the other areas, really, there was, I would say, a pretty exhaustive engineering study that was done to take a look at really what was necessary in this part of the city's infrastructure, that was not only going to address kind of some of the aging infrastructure and components that we have out there, but also where can we kind of use our dollars to do the most good, and so this project is going to focus on things like replacing pumps, valving, piping, we'll be installing, or provided this goes for, we'll be installing VFDs, so it's, it's, it's going to help our system, not only modernize our system, but it's also going to help our system kind of work, I'll say, work smarter, and kind of, I guess, do a better job having all of those locations work collectively together, it's, without getting too far in the weeds, right, right now, we have kind of a system where a lot of these locations, they work somewhat independently, and it's not necessarily for the benefit of the overall system, and so we found in going through this engineering analysis that really making some, besides making some updates and modernizing what we have, and getting everything to work together as, as really one collective system, is going to just, it's going to also make it work much better for the whole community, so that's, that's kind of allowed us to, I think, make the best use of those dollars, and also reduce the overall scope of the project.
That's sort of what, I mean, that sounds fantastic, but if, if the scope of the project is halved, then we found a boon, is this, are, are we making what is normally a cycle of a twenty-year repair, a forty-year repair, are we pushing out these expenses? We've halved from eighteen to, we found some real efficiency.
Yeah, if I understand your question, I think, so part of the, part of the review of these facilities too, was to take a look structurally, and, and I think early on, there was some thought that potentially some facilities might need to be replaced or rebuilt in their entirety, and that's not what we found when we went through this.
We're doing those.
Which, to, you know, knock, knock on some wood, but I think in, in general, the condition of, of like the reservoirs is, is overall very good, it just, there's, some of the components, the mechanical components really need updating, so I think going through that process kind of helped us, again, kind of refine where the dollars need to be spent.
Alderman Nardini, let me add, at, at one point, we were looking at the west reservoir, and whether or not that was public space, that could, we could maybe relocate the reservoir and, and try to liquidate that, and, and the study that Stan's talking about showed that it would not be worthwhile for us to do that, and I think that helped bring that cost of the project down significantly.
Because had we gone forward, we would have been doing stuff to accommodate the loss of the wet, I understand.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on page four dash eight, one of the things I wanted to touch on, and Director Billick, you already spoke to it briefly, but I was looking for maybe a solution to cut the expenses in half or something, line item five thirty one sixty and one sixty-five, I know we need to do the mailings, and now you're saying that we need to do the mailings more often, is it a federal mandate that we have to mail them? Right, today's technology, we get most of our bills electronically, is it actually a federal mandate that you have to have a physical pamphlet come to your house in the mail?
Yes, it is, yep.
Well, that kills that cost reduction, all right, line item five thirty one zero sixty-five, concrete street rehab, it seems like we've been consistently spending one-hundred-and-eighty-five or around that, those dollars every year, what area is this that we continue to need to do concrete street rehab, is this part of the wastewater treatment plant, or?
Yeah, I think that is, that's when we have, that's maybe a little bit of a misnomer, I think kind of what, what that is, is when we have a water main break happen, that requires some kind of a concrete repair as opposed to asphalt, that gets accounted for in that spot, so it's not really, we're not necessarily really maintaining the pavement in the same way that we are, like when we're doing street resurfacing, it's more, it's, it's a, it's a fix because of a repair that's a utility repair.
Okay, so, knock on wood, nice winter, less water main breaks, and then the dollar spent here would be even lower.
Perhaps.
You just.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
No confidence there, last item being five thirty one ten, and maybe you spoke to it and I missed it, but why are we going so excessively high this proposed budget year? I don't remember if there is, I don't think there was a J form because it was budgeted the same amount the previous year, but.
Right, so in what, five thirty one ten, the proposed budget for next year is three-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, and it was three ninety-five nine hundred for this year, so it's, it's actually, it's decreasing a little bit, I will say, one of the things that is in there, that is not an every-year expense, but we have to, as a water utility, every five years, we have to update our risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan for our utilities, that is an item that's in there, we, we did that in 2021, and so 2026 here, that'll be an item that's in there, that we'll need to follow through on.
Could you speak to why then, this fiscal year, we're spending about half, or less than half, one-hundred-and-sixty thousand only, I mean, is that difference, I know the, it was budgeted for three ninety-five nine, but it just seems like we went from one sixty thousand spent this year to three eighty-five, is there anything else encompassed in that line item?
As we're sitting here, whoops, I can't, I can't state that to you, chapter and verse, I'd be happy to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Chair Mayor, Chairman, Chairman Mayor? Looking at four dash three, I think we were, and this is a question, I think, for Director Coyle, do we have a target, you know, this isn't a specific question on?
Mr. Treasurer, where are you?
I think four dash, four dash three triggered my question, but, but this question is not on four dash three, I'm looking at the interest income line on four dash three, which, which is healthy, got me thinking, do we have a target cash position or reserve balance within the MUF fund that we, that we look for?
So we have no formal reserve policy, I think we've been looking at the twenty-five percent as kind of what's been recommended to us as the rate study, so one of the benefits that we, we have increased our cash balance, you know, this was a fund that was almost, you know, in a, in a zero cash balance position, so as we have built that balance up to be able to do the capital projects and fund, fund the fund, that interest income is one of the benefits that that increases.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman Bram, so that question by the City Treasurer brings to mind, so this budget incorporates the revenue from our current water rate structure, is that an accurate statement?
Yes and no, so it incorporates three rate adjustments as part of this, now this, any rate change would have to go to the Finance Committee and City Council, so this is just what's in the proposed budget, it includes raising the commodity rate, so DuPage Water Commission is a pass-through rate, so we get charged to purchase water, we pass that along to our customers, we have been subsidizing that DuPage Water Commission rate since May of twenty-five, so the proposed budget increases that rate to match what we're being charged from DuPage Water Commission, so that's one change, the second change is adjusting the CIRC fee for, we, we talked a minute ago about the potable water loan, that that future debt service will be coming on, so looking at that CIRC fee to see if we need to adjust it to cover that debt service, and then the second part, Director Billick hasn't gotten to the sewer yet, but the debt service for bundle five will be coming into the, the MUF, and so budgeting, the, the previous rate study that we did recommended looking at a phosphorus fee to be added to fund the bundle five debt service, and so this includes starting that, that phosphorus fee to fund that debt service, so that, those are all things that the Finance Committee will, will review and look at, there is, in this, this budget, there is no increase to what we call the Elmhurst sewer and water volumetric rates, so that's not the DuPage Water Commission, there's, there's not an increase budgeted for those two rates in 2026.
Alderman Nardini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Director Coyle, you just said that the three changes are no longer making a pass-through from the water fee from 2025, we have eaten that, we are no longer going to, the second thing is?
Correct.
Looking at a CIRC fee change, and the third is looking at bundle five debt service, sewer debt service, are those the three?
Correct.
Can you show me on pages, sort of where the CIRC fee change is visible?
Sure, so if you go to four dash three, in the second grouping under charges for services, the fifth line down that says capital recovery charge, you'll see that's going up to a budgeted number of four point seven two, so that would be the, the potable water change, and then if you go down to four four zero six seven seven, that is the proposed phosphorus fee revenue associated with bundle five.
Thank you.
Of course.
Alderman Bram?
I think I may know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway, so these proposed increases is a must-have, I mean, there's no option here, right, because we need to do the phosphorus, we need to pretty much cover what we're being charged for the water from DuPage Water Commission, right?
Correct.
So these are a must, or is there any other ideas or thoughts on how we can go about paying for these changes?
I would, I would say they're a must, our philosophy for debt service has been using the CIRC or the phosphorus fee, now we could not do the phosphorus fee and just, you know, cover them all under the CIRC rate, but that has been the city policy, is we use the CIRC rate to fund debt service, the bundle five debt service, we're currently under construction, drawing down on that loan, so that is a known cost, the potable water cost, that in 26 is budgeted at a half-year principal and interest payment, because we don't start getting invoiced if the project is done, so assuming that starts in 26, we, for both bundle five and the, the potable water, we're not budgeting a full year yet, the commodity price from DuPage Water Commission, that, that is a fee that we're charged, and that's increasing, we will still be subsidizing, even if we increase it to the five dollars and eighty cents that we're getting charged now that we're subsidizing, they will increase their rate, they always increase at May first of the year, so there will be another increase that then we will subsidize at the, the second half of the fiscal year, and so if we, if we don't increase that now, we're just going to be even further?
In the hole.
In the hole for that, so.
Thank you, I mean, I think it's good to note and have these discussions, that we have been subsidizing some of the water rates, I know there's a lot of concern throughout town about the water rates, and I know that there's more to come, but it's good for the public to understand that there has been, in a way, discounts given, because we haven't been charging a one-to-one on the water rates that we as a city are charged.
Alderman Tallulou?
I mean, obviously, the Finance Committee will be looking at all of this, you know, thoroughly during the, the budget year, and, and doing our best to keep water and sewer service affordable for all of us that live in Elmhurst, while still being responsible about funding, you know, what needs to be done at the, at the plant, I do have a question, though, on the, on the revenue side, since you brought our attention to four dash three, you know, there's a couple of items that are contributing to us making about a million dollars more in revenue and charges for service than what we expected, is any of that flowing through to helping us next year?
So that, you know, that's what's flowing through to help the recommendation to not increase the volumetric rates, so that's providing that fund balance so that we can hold rates steady next year for those two, so that's some good news.
All right, I think we can now move on to the next chapter.
Okay, so the next part of the MUF is related to expenses for the sanitary sewer system, there are seven J forms that are associated with this part of the MUF budget, several of them are the same categorically as the ones that we've spoken about before.
Which page are you starting on?
I'm sorry, I apologize, four dash fifteen is what I'm looking at for starters, and so, instead of kind of just rereading and going back through some of the same items, I would just call your attention to a few that are a little different, so item B on page four dash fifteen, in account five thirty one zero two five, there is a replacement, essentially a sewer grinder that has to be replaced in the Saylor and Jackson Lift Station next year, that's representing an increase of forty-six thousand dollars in that line item, you can see that budget for this year was one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, and it is, it's proposed for next year to go up to one sixty-six, and that's specific to that particular maintenance project, the other, the other thing that I would just note is that on item C, in account five thirty one two seventy-five, this represents the dollars that we use for. this represents the dollars that we use for contracted repairs on the sanitary sewer side. And again, we've, we've kind of seen the cost of those go up. We use our crews to try to repair just about everything we can. There's times when either due to having, to repair a sewer that might be deeper or larger than what our equipment, our, our staff are trained or able to, to do, we contract it out. Or if there's just a capacity issue in terms of the, the amount of work that's happening, at one time, we might contract a sanitary repair. But that's what those dollars are, are used for. But short of those, I think most of the other items in that area are kind of similar to the things that we've mentioned previously.
Okay, so we're, those are the J forms, starting on page four thirteen for sewer, questions? Alderman Brennan.
This is just sort of a macro question. So you, you know, the first series of J forms, you had electricity sort of highlighted. Doesn't seem to be an issue with, you know, as we move over to sewer, the sewer department. So was your comment related to electricity, was across the department? Or I'm surprised that there wouldn't be a similar issue in, in this area. And it may mean.
I don't think there's electricity.
It may be a me issue.
There's no electricity, is there?
There's no electricity.
So this is, this, I see, so this is personnel.
I think he's saying it's a you.
Electricity, it's counted for, accounted for in the water side of this, of the MUF, I believe.
Okay. That's fine.
Did you get, you got what you want?
I, I think so. I, I need to look this more closely, but thank you.
All right, additional. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. Follow up on Alderman Brennan's question, I didn't quite understand. So when we go to the sewer side, the 5106075 in the 510 MUF Fund, we have no electricity line item. Is that correct?
Correct.
Then we go over to the water side, the freshwater side, we do.
Correct. And in wastewater, there is an electricity line item for the electricity associated with the plant.
And I'm not sure I understood that. So let me see if I can reiterate it. There's no electricity cost on the wastewater treatment plant side?
There is. So on, if you go to the next cost center, 5106077, there is an electricity line item. And that's, the, the plant does have a substantial electric bill that you'll see in that cost center. Uh, four dash 17.
Four dash 17, I just hadn't got that far, I apologize.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten there yet.
We haven't got there yet?
That's nice.
All right. There was anything useful. What was the, what was your thought on that, Alderman Brennan, with the electric?
Looking at this, I, I mean, the sewer infrastructure, I mean, it's all gravity, right? I mean, there's.
Substellen stations.
Yeah, so, so I, I just think that, that it's not as prominent just because of how it, it's a me issue. So, okay, I got it now, though, so.
But we're going to get to electricity, correct? So on the wastewater treatments plant side.
Yep.
All right, anything else on sewer department? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Bram.
On four thirteen, this is a general question, I guess, for all of our buildings, for telephone. I see increases across the board. Are we using voice over IP? Maybe this is an IT question more so than a public works question. But why do we continue to see increases in essentially every department for telephone? Are we using cloud based services?
So the, the increases there are just, if you actually go back and look, we actually have had substantial reductions in telephone costs since 2023. So that was 107,000. So there were some reductions that we did do in kind of our, our circuits that we reduced. But then just kind of moving up from there, it's just the general cost of, of service for our providers.
Is it voice over IP or cloud services or good old fashioned landline? Do we know? I'll wait for IT. Okay, so do we, I'll wait for IT to ask more questions on that topic.
So for the people who are watching on tape, the answer was it's phone and data together. All right, Alderman Bram.
Correct. 530110, professional services. It used to be very small, and now it's consistently pretty large at 360,000. Was that just a reallocation? Are we seeing more professional services utilized? What is the, what seems to be more of a permanent increase for professional services?
So the professional services in the, in this area, in the sewer portion of the MUF, this is where we account for all engineering that gets done on a lot of the items like the sanitary sewer, the manhole rehabilitation, sanitary sewer cleaning inspection services, kind of annual, annual programs that happen where we're using professional services to, to design those.
So have we ramped up in the last two, three years, those items?
I think there may have been some, there was, there was some account consolidation, I think, that happened, I think, starting in 2024.
We don't have to research it now, if we make a circle back, that's fine. It just is interesting that it's about five grand and then it goes up to 77,000, and now we're at 360,000, so.
That's the, so adding in, that's, there have been some requirements in terms of having a fats, oils and grease program, having a pre-treatment program, which are, are things that have also kind of come into fruition over the past few years.
All right, well, we've got to circle back on that so you can get a little detail. Alderman Erby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions real quick. The interplay between sewer maintenance versus capital outlay.
What page?
So sewer maintenance, I'm sorry, thank you, Alderman Bram. Four thirteen, because we're still in sewer department. Of course, this applies also, I think, to water, but we'll stay focused on sewer. I thought someone said something, didn't, no?
No, you have a line number?
Yeah, line number for sewer repairs is 531275. Again, back to page four thirteen. And the interplay with that, well, so we're at 75,000, which is a number that's, it's there. I, I don't see a problem with it. But then, how do we make a distinction between the repair versus what's on four fourteen on, under capital outlay, 570210 sanitary sewers? You know, when you, when you line the sewer, right? Obviously, that's a pretty easy decision for sanitary sewer in my book. So can you speak to that, Director Bulicki?
Yeah, so.
How do you, how do you manage those two and interplay them properly?
The, the account that's under the capital outlay, that is really, I guess, what I would call capital maintenance of our system. So it's contracted capital maintenance, annual programs to do lining, rehabilitation of sewer lines. The earlier item that you mentioned, the 5, 531275, that is literally contracted repairs of sewer line breaks. So if we have a sewer collapse, we have something happen, we have to bring in a contractor to fix that particular spot. That's where that gets accounted for. It's not really capital maintenance that's.
Right, so it's not in the KEB, obviously. In other words, if we're going to line a sewer, that would show up on the KEB. And we know those are designated from, you know, point A to B along that road.
Correct. This other item, this is, this is the same as.
This is instant overnight, something broke over there.
Just like if we have a sewer main break that we have to bring a contractor in for, it'd be just the same, except on the sanitary side.
Right, perfect answer, perfect answer, I like that. Second piece, four thirteen, depreciation, 555000. As we're capexing a lot of these wastewater treatment plant cost, I'm wondering why our depreciation expense will not immediately start increasing from that year that we place that asset in service? So are we planning on upping our depreciation expense as we up our capital X expenditures? It looks like, I don't see it here, but I'm sure there's, can you speak to that?
Yes, we will, as, you know, as our audit depreciation increases, we will increase that budgeted account. I do not believe that bundle five will be placed in service in 26. It's probably more of a 27 or end of 28, that, that'll be placed in service, so.
Okay, but that's a conscious effort, we, you know that's coming.
Correct, correct.
For your depreciation expense. I think that's good, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Alderman Nudera.
Thank you, Mayor. A real quick question, as far as wages for part time, it looks like you're hiring some more part timers. Page four thirteen, wages part time, up to 142,600.
Give me one second. There were a couple reallocations. There was one for one part time, public works employee that got moved to water and sewer. There, as I recall, there were also, there were some finance position, a finance position that was moved from a full time position to a part time position that would also reflect that increase as well.
Well, thank you.
All right, anything else in this department? I'm inclined to try one more department. So let's see if we can get through that and do it maybe 10 minutes, maybe 15. So that would be water reclamation.
So this last, last item in the municipal utility fund is, is for, specifically for the water reclamation facility. There are six J forms that are associated with this cost center on page four dash 18 and four dash 19. Kind of continuing the theme from, from prior sections, I won't repeat some of the ones that are consistent across the board. But I would just call your attention to a few. Item A, account 53110 is for professional services. One of the conditions of the city's new NPDS permit for operating the wastewater facility is to complete a PFOS study. Basically, doing inventory of industries in the city that may use or produce PFOS substances. That is a requirement of our permit, so we'll be using outside services to, to help complete that. The other one is item D, account 541120, which is chemicals. One of the things that's changed with, with the most recent bundle project that we have been going through is a change in our chemicals. The use of sodium thiosulfate, which just started to be used this year to basically dechlorinate our, our water as, as prior to us discharging it. This account reflects the cost for this chemical as part of the treatment process. And that's, that's a change due to the work happening at the treatment plant.
All right, questions? Alderman Erby.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear, Director Bulicki, on the chemicals, on page four seventeen, 541120 chemicals. You said you changed the disinfection method. Is that disinfection just for the water reclamation, correct?
It's actually, so it, we have to, during certain months of the year, we have to chlor, chlorinate the water, but then we also have to dechlorinate it before it goes into the creek. So this is the dechlorination chemical.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping that I was, I was thinking the public water, the potable water side.
No.
And that we would get some benefits from the disinfection, by disinfection products, rates that have been on the increase, and I'm hoping we can get them moving back down the other end of the slope. Thank you. My confusion.
Other questions, discussion? All right, Alderman Tulluto.
Sorry, I just, how is the, the new plant manager, for lack of a better word, working out? And, you know, we just don't really ever have an opportunity to talk about that, so I thought I would ask.
Say terrible.
So far, I, I think doing a great job. We, one of the things that we've been specifically focused on is we have received our draft NPDS permit from the IEPA. And we've spent a couple of meetings going through that in, really with a fine tooth comb, with the DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group. They have been a partner of the city's for, for quite a few years. And our, our new manager at the plant has taken an active role in not only kind of going through that draft permit, reaching out to, to DuPage River Salt Creek Work Group. We've brought in other communities that are, are part of that also to complete that review so that we're kind of coordinating our comments back to the IEPA. So I've been very happy that we've been able to take an active role, not only for ourselves in, in looking at our own permit language, but also reaching out and coordinating with other communities, making sure that our language is consistent across our permits. Because you might think that's a simple thing, but it, sometimes it's not. And so we've caught a few things based on, on our actions in doing that. And, and so that's just one, one example. But there is, there's a lot to do there. And that's, so that, that's really kind of one case in point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Bram.
Just a follow up on that, so I have an understanding. So the plant manager is not referring to Jonathan's old role. I know Jonathan left the city of Elmhurst, but, so that's a different role that we're speaking about, right?
Correct, this is the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, I thought we all of a sudden had good news that I wasn't aware about, that we found someone for that role, but we're not speaking of the same role.
No.
Thank you.
All right, I think that closes off.
There's one more account for Stan on their stormwater. If you think we can maybe squeeze that in, if the council's willing.
Five nineteen.
That would let him off the hook for being here. Anthony doesn't love coming, don't get me wrong.
Sure he does. Stan, you can come next week anyway, but we'll do five nineteen, go ahead.
Whenever, whenever you need me, I'm, I'm happy to be here. But this would close out the kind of public works related accounts. This is a stormwater fund on page five dash 19. And by and large, this is really a capital fund that accounts for some stormwater improvements in the city. And there really is a single J form that's associated with this cost center. It's on page five dash 23. And it is account 57220. And it really accounts for the stormwater capital projects that are slated to happen in 2026. And there are a few significant ones. The first one is the North Groy Woods Stormwater Improvement Project, and the amount of 1.956 million. And then we also have $320,000 that is budgeted for some repairs at the Yorkfield Basin, at the.
Director Rogers. It is my understanding that the Park District is going to be doing a master plan rehab of Crestview Park. And it's been in the budget, I don't know, five plus years, if not more, in regards to the stormwater concerns in that area and potentially utilizing Crestview Park. Have there been any continued conversations with the Park District, since I do see it in the KEB for the stormwater for Crestview? But it's for 2027 versus 2026, when the park is going to be redone?
So I know that our city engineer has been in contact with the Park District to coordinate those projects. I, I'm not sure that the Crestview project that you're referring to is the same as Crestview Park. I think that was flow out of the park onto one of the residential streets. That's a little bit different. So kind of two, maybe two different projects. And so we're working with the Park District to control that flow, I believe that's on the south side of the park. I think that's what you're referring to, at least that's how I took your messages.
Correct. It is on the south side of the park. But I guess where I'm going with this is that the park is being, or proposed, right, a master plan to be redone. If there's going to be any need for stormwater management, if it's grading, if it's actually underground storage or what have you, I would think that we should budget the dollars for the 2026, when the park is being dug up versus 2027, when essentially, I would assume that the Park District would say, no, we just redid our park, and you are not doing any stormwater detention on it. Could we just make that a circle back, and I can follow offline?
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Tolu.
Yeah, I just, I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but I just, I cannot remember having put storm sewers line 570220 into our stormwater fund expenses. Like, I don't, like that.
That's just the account that we've used for stormwater improvement. So the, the storm sewers line item, that's where all of the KEB projects for stormwater projects go. That's just where we have traditionally always accounted for them.
Okay.
And then storm stations, that's the stormwater pumping stations.
Okay. So storm sewers is maybe, I guess, a misnomer compared to how we typically talk about it when we're looking at the stormwater fund planning and revenues and things.
Correct. So, but storm sewers is where all of the capital, if you looked at the KEB for the stormwater fund, you'd be able to tie those storm water projects to that line item.
Okay. So can I have a follow up on that?
Follow up or circle back?
Follow up. No, I have another question.
Yeah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I also don't remember ever seeing a North Grawy Woods Stormwater Improvement Project in any list that we've had. I just forgot about that.
That was, that was one of the, the projects that was identified by the Public Works Committee that was part of the, the stormwater financial review and funding.
In the prioritization from back when Alderman Kennedy was here?
Yes.
Yes. No.
Where is that?
We can send that out.
Send it.
No. Where is this project?
Hi, Jake. What's the street?
Oh, it's your neighborhood. It's that, like playground.
Is that a motion to cut the budget, Alderman Tolu?
That playground and that whole, like, kind of little subdivision there.
Yeah.
All of that. Okay.
Correct.
I do remember it. I don't remember, I remember that project, I didn't remember the name of the project. Final follow up question. You know, our fund balance is.
Substantial.
Increasing.
Yeah.
And growing. I mean, in '27, it's going to be, you know, two, and that's after we do that, those projects. By 2030, it's six, seven. I mean, is this, is this fund balance performing better than we expected the last time that we looked at this? And is it worthy of revisiting this, given project costs, what we're doing, timing, implementation, revenues coming in, et cetera? Because, I mean, we shouldn't be sitting on fund balance that we don't need in this fund.
So it is tracking kind of in line, in line with where our projections were. It is probably doing a little bit better in terms of our home rule sales taxes performing a little bit better than we thought. Remember, though, that the home rule sales tax, and I'm going to forget the exact year, but it does sunset after a point in time.
Only 34.
To then pay down the, to then continue to pay down the debt service. But that is something that, that I do look at when we're projecting this fund, is how does it look in comparison to what that, that original projection was that the city council approved?
Okay.
But we can certainly look at it.
Maybe we'll put that on our finance committee, just, you know, when we don't have anything else to do, just get a update on, on that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Alderman Erby.
Real quick one, interest income on 5-20. I think this tails on to Alderman Tolu's question about the balances. If, if we're holding like a 6 million beginning and a 6.8 rounded end, and we have a $60,000 interest income, you know, two years before, in 2024, we got a 2.2 percent return on, if you just went off the end in balance, it may have been a, you know, went from 217 to 306. So I'm sure it was a, it was a climb up. So therefore, you know, there was an average in there. Should that interest income be a little bit higher? Can you speak to that?
It depends on what interest rates end up being, and that's, that is a revenue item that we do tend to budget somewhat conservatively, because we don't want to rely on it being there to do projects. So certainly, is it possible that we would receive more income? Yes, we were kind of looking at, you know, where we're estimated to end 2025, and that interest rates are coming down a little bit from where we are at in our current, you know, previous to the beginning of the year. So it's a best guess, but we'll continue to look at it.
Right. Because you're, it looks like we're right at 1%. You know, 60,000 over 6 million is a 1% return. So that's what you guys are thinking?
We can look at it. It's probably a conservative estimate.
Okay.
But.
I think what just kind of hit me is a low number with $6 million in the bank.
All right. Anyone else? All right. So we will pick up, I imagine, next time with the police department, but you'll let us know, the chief's all here and dressed up, but.
We, we will have our friends from the library here.
Library?
Start next, and then, well, of course, we'll go right into the police department.
Very good. All right. I think we'll, Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I know we, not today, but when is an appropriate time to discuss the circle back memo as we get the circle backs? Are we saving that till the end of budget discussion, or should we address those at some point during the budget discussion?
Well, I think we're putting it out there so that instead of holding it until the last meeting, so people can look at it and see if they have questions. But we're getting a little behind in terms of our progress to, so I would, I don't know that we'll get to it next time, but let's see if we can march through and cut off another big chunk to get back on schedule. And if we do that, I think we could revisit some circle back items before the end. But the key is you have the information ahead of time, so you're not getting it, you know, five days before the last meeting where we do all the circle backs. All right. Good work tonight. Thank you. I can have a motion to adjourn. Alderman Bellinger and our staff secondar, Alderman Shenko, with a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.